All right, it is six o'clock and we have a pretty packed agenda, so let's go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Christian County Library Board of Trustees meeting. If anybody needs tonight's agenda, it is in the room between the doors in the back on a table. All right, we'll start with the consent agenda. Are there any items that we need to remove from the consent agenda to discuss individually?
I didn't see anything.
Okay. All right, so I will, is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I motion to pass the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to our administrative highlights, the summer reading challenge update.
I asked our Director of Youth Services Dana Roberts to, she does this every year, give an overview of our recently completed summer reading challenge.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. Yeah, my name's Dana Roberts. I'm the Director of Youth Services for Christian County Library, and I also organize all of our reading challenges that we host in the summer, the fall, the winter, and the spring. Now, we have four seasonal ones. This year's summer reading theme was adventure begins at your library, so it was all about experiencing adventure in different ways. We had lots of fun programs around this theme, and all of our branches were decorated through travel, science fiction or fantasy, hiking, camping, those kinds of adventurous pursuits. So, our summer reading challenge is hosted from June 1st to July 1st every year, so through the months of June and July. It equates to about eight to nine weeks long. That seems to be just about the right spot for participants to do, and also for staff to have fun programs that time period. It's point-based, so every five, when you earn 500 points, you earn your prizes. So you can earn points by reading, doing activities, attending library events, or writing book reviews. There are prizes for all ages during summer. There is a free book and a coupon book for children, for babies, children, and teens, and then adults also get a free book upon the 500 points. We want to encourage the whole family to read together, so we started offering a free book about three years ago, and we've seen like an increase in our adult participation through that. Oh, could you go back on site please? Thank you. Participants also earn tickets to larger prizes when they get to 500 points, and then every 500 points after that, they'll get an extra ticket to a larger prize. And we have summer performers, special summer performers, and then we have a lot of community partnerships in the summertime to drive that community engagement that we see here at the library all the time. Next slide please, thank you. So some overall statistics, this summer we had 2,249 people register for summer. There were 490 book reviews written, and 17,498 activities completed. And then we had 2.8 million minutes read, which is about on par with what we had last year, and I'm, my goal this year was still to hit like 2.5 million. So I have a little countdown in my office, so every time I hit like 100,000, 200,000, I was like, yes, and I marked it off, and I was so excited. And once we hit 2.8, 2.5, I was happy, but then at 2.8, I was like, yes, we got to last year's goal. Registration by branch, you can see, we have a heavy registration in NIXA. These are entries that patrons put in themselves. So when they register for Beanstack, or they come in and collect their prizes, we'll ask like, what is your home branch? Where do you normally go and check out books or pick up stuff? And they'll say, NIXA, Ozark, Sparta, or Clever. And we see a lot of people picking up in NIXA, maybe it's not like their home city, like where they live, but it might be where they drive through to go get groceries and come back at, and they pick up their items here frequently. Ozark is at about 40%, and Clever and Sparta, about 6 to 7% of our patrons. The breakdown like for ages, because we have four separate challenges. We have one for babies and toddlers that is geared towards early literacy with our Raising to Read Challenge. Kids and tweens, that's pre-K to grade six. Teens are six to 12, and adults are obviously 18 plus. We see our biggest population is the kids and tweens. That's pre-K to grade six, over 1,000 of them registered this year. That's actually like down by maybe like 20 from last year, but a lot of them have graduated and gone to the teen challenge, because we saw a 39% increase in just teens registering this year. So very, very happy with that number. Sometimes those teens are a little hard to get to the library and interacting with activities, so surprise it, right? I know, shocking. And adults, we've seen that number increase every year, and again, this year increased by 3% of adults registering and completing the challenge. And this is just a little graph, you can see from the 2020, with the summer we all wished we could have had again, it was a fantasy theme, you know, fairy tales and fantasy characters. That was down a lot in 2020. 2021, we started to get higher. 2022, we got even higher. That's when we started to see, okay, we're getting back to normal with registration and engagement. 2023, we went down a little bit, and 2024, we've gone back up. So I think we'll probably see us staying at about this level over the coming years, depending on as kids graduate, moving into different age groups, we get more babies, more families in the area, that whole number will get a little bit different, but very, very happy with that result. Our coupon book sponsors were amazing this year. We had an amazing opportunity with the 14 mil market. They, London Calling, the Liege Love Waffle Company, as well as the Blue Jay, sorry, not Blue Jay Scoops, Lindsay's Kitchen offered coupons in our coupon book this year. We also had Blue Jay scoops and Chef Daddy Burgers out of Clever. It was our first like restaurants in Clever that offered a free burger or a free ice cream scoop. So happy to have that. Our goal next year is to get more restaurants in Sparta involved, so we have more participants in the coupon book from the entire county, not just heavy on NIXA or Ozark. And then these are some of our big prizes. That's one of our winners. She comes to our Storytimes and programs a lot actually, so it was really fun for her to get a prize. We have prizes for adults, like a night out, and that allows adults to go out to the 14 mil market and then go to the B&amp;B Suites or B&amp;B Theaters to a movie afterwards. We had a Taylor Swift basket for adults this year, that one was heavily competed for. One of our baby baskets, we try to do an outdoor thing every year, and this year we had a sandbox with 100 pounds of sand, again, very heavily competed for. And then we had two options for pickleball, because we've had a lot of feedback that that's getting popular. We had one for the adults and one in the kids' basket to encourage them to either do pickleball at home, or maybe just have it available to go to a park with. Programs, so this year, as many of you may have heard, we had a large increase in door countage just in the summer, and I saw that reflected in our programs. We had 223 programs, that's including Storytimes, as including like crafts, yoga, tai chi, everything that we do, but we had 5,456 people attending all of those this summer, and I can tell you, we felt that number big time. Just in Ozark, we had 98 programs and 3,000 people in those programs. It was a lot. And as someone who's been here and planning summer reading for next year, my 10th year planning summer reading, we, this is as close to what it felt like in 2018, 2019, at the height of our busy season, as I felt in the past three, four years. So the level of engagement I saw with patrons and programs, the excitement, the children's area being busy, books getting checked out, we could all feel that energy, but seeing it reflected in the numbers was really satisfying. And we had a bunch of programs this year, so I want to highlight some of the super fun ones. Uke66 is one of our local ukulele bands. They did a ukulele workshop, teaching people how to play the ukulele, as well as a bunch of, a couple of kids' concerts as well. And then we had Celia Rocks, she is out of St. Louis, she was in the area doing some performances, and she does a lot of really fun like camp-based songs that you would normally see like in like a summer camp or something like that. She, a lot of energy, anyone who was here that day can tell you, it was a lot of energy. It was very loud and a lot of fun. And Magic, we have to have our very own Marty Ham the Magician, he is from Ozark, give a little plug out to Marty, he's amazing. He is, does such a great job of presenting for kids. I see a lot of children's performers, and the level of just individual attention he gives to everybody, the way he, the humor, adults laughing, kids laughing, he always has a great message. We love Marty here. Animals, of course, every year we have the Dickerson Park Zoo, our local zoo, Jamie, they're in the picture, she comes to almost all of our programs, except this year we had the eagles of North America. We had a bald eagle and a golden eagle visiting us on July 3rd in celebration of the Fourth of July, we had to have our national bird here. And there were some super fun pictures, we had Kellogg the corn snake there. I know Kellogg the corn snake, I think their naming is amazing. Unfortunately, I don't, I got Kellogg. Unfortunately, I do not know the hedgehog's name, but I can guarantee it's amazing, because they have fun names all the time.
Sonic.
There you go, Sonic.
Maybe a Sonic, yeah. This was one of the first years we've had Stone Lion Puppet Theater, they are out of, I believe Kansas City, it could be St. Louis, forgive me, I can't remember the exact city. Their puppetry is the Pico professional. They had a working waterfall, they did a version of Little Red Hen's garden, sorry, the Little, sorry, the Little Red Hen, but this is Little Red Hen's Community Garden. There was music, there was singing, that was a huge stage in the middle of the Ozark large meeting room. We had to angle it, because it was so big. I can't, we had, the audience was entranced. A lot of kids don't get the opportunity to see like professional puppetry like this, and everyone in the audience, audience like, yes, please bring them back, we want to see something like Stella Luna, so we'll, hopefully we can bring them back next year. So many crafts this summer, I tried to include a couple pictures here, but there, we saw just people after patron, a patron is coming in and doing these crafts with the family, all of them together, individuals. We had a study in color program for adults, the firework painting, building, making a wind chime. We just, again, it was amazing seeing the excitement in the room as everyone worked on their individual project together, but how everyone's project was a little bit different or looking who they are. And then we had the One NIXA One Read. Now technically, this was on May 30th, so it wasn't during summer, but it was kind of a kickoff, I think, for the excitement of reading in the summer. The One NIXA One Read was here at the NIXA branch, it had about 400 people attending, they gave away the Roald Dahl's, Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, there was hot dogs, there was music with the CC rhythm, just a lot, a really good time, it really kicked off the energy of summer. And then we had a lot of book clubs this summer. We had, you know, our regular sci-fi horror book club, the hashtag book club, Books and Baristas, Real Reads, you know, every branch has something to offer, whatever you're interested in, whatever your preferred genre is. I just thought it was fun to see all the books laid out like this, to see what everyone's reading over the summer. And then of course, coming soon, we have our Fall Into Reading Challenge, that's starting on September 1st, and we have some prizes like a puzzle table, an outdoor campfire pit, a morning breakfast griddle, and pancake dispenser. So whenever you're reading, you know, once, once are this summer, or this fall, make sure you're logging your minutes read and getting tickets to enter all these cool prizes.
Any questions for me now?
Yeah, Dana, what do you attribute the increase to? When it was, did you feel like you had better focused advertising, or?
I think so, I think it's a mixture between, I don't think it's going to be one thing, I think it's going to be, we started more baby programs, for example, over the past year. We have an increase in Storytimes because of that. Our social media team and the communications team has done so many cool videos, promotional videos for summer. We've been getting back into the schools more promoting that reading during the summer as well. It's a lot of little things, I think, that has led up to this. Maybe families being more comfortable coming out and about, maybe there's not as much travel in June, and so they're looking for things to do, that could be it.
Well, it was nice to see the increase in numbers.
Thank you.
Do you have a way to track and see, I was thinking about the increase in teens, how many of those teens started with doing a reading program when they were babies and toddlers, or maybe even just early elementary, to see if that's what, if catching them early and getting them excited about the summer reading is something that allows them, I mean, I think that would be great PR, to help, you know, to share with your Storytime parents that like, starting a love of reading early can lead to continued love of reading at times when a lot of kids are not interested.
Right. We know that it does help, like summer reading and keeping them engaged in learning, at least during the summer, helps them keep at a reading level throughout the school years, but we don't have a way of tracking like individual names. It was only about three years ago that we started tracking using Beanstack, so it's hard for me to, I have like overall numbers, but because I don't have names written down, I couldn't say like they started as a baby, unfortunately.
You should, it just might be interesting to talk to some of the families that you see year after year and find out how long they've been doing it.
I have families, and I know that when I started here about 10 years ago, that they're still coming in with their kiddos, so, yeah, maybe we can ask them of them for some stories, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Now you deserve a break.
Yes.
Thank you.
September 12th.
September 12th. All right, moving on to our old business, pre-design services.
I provided some information. Yeah, I kind of gave you a summary of what all we've talked about in a little bit more detail about my conversations with the vendors and things, and talking through specific qualifications for each of them, so I've made a recommendation, but if you guys have questions about any of this, or thoughts on a different direction, just whatever you'd like to ask at this point.
Yeah, I, I thought there's two, two things that kind of helped me think about it is, I like your last bullet, but I also thought that if you had a ranking, you said all three firms have specialized experience, all three firms have, and all three firms have past experience regarding, so I, I thought the same thing, that they're all qualified, but I also think that there's probably one that's more qualified based on those rankings. I was kind of hoping that you would rank them.
Well, I mean, I, from a like one to three kind of thing, SAP would be higher than, the other two would be the same, I think, because I don't have personal experience with them. So I would rank SAP higher, and specifically, as I mentioned in, in the narrative here, they, SAP has more experience with public libraries and with Christian County projects, and some of that's just because they, they're an older firm than the other two, so I think just longevity, but, and then when it comes to past performance, we have experience with SAP specifically in past performance because of their work on Clever and Sparta, those came in underestimated costs and satisfaction with their work at the renovations for Ozark and NIXA, and then I would rank SAP higher with proximity and familiarity with the area of the project, because they know our, our branch is our brand, so that's how I would, would rank them. The, the other two, I didn't, in our conversations and in what we asked them for, some of, there's not specifics about a ton of things, because we didn't go the route of requesting all of their qualifications and everything. So they would be equal, and SAP would have ranked higher because of those specific things that I mentioned there.
When I looked online, looked at past projects and people they worked with, you know, customer satisfaction, one of the main comments I noticed under Paragon and, and Dayquell's was that on paper they were very good, but their response and their follow-through, their timely follow-through left, inconvenienced people greatly, and left some unexpected dilemmas that they had to deal with, with these two companies, whereas SAP had a greater, significantly greater satisfaction rating from clients. Yeah, I'm just, it's only what I could see, you know, it's online, you can only see what you can see, but, and personally, before reading this from Renee's report, since I've been with the system since 2020, or with the Board of Trustees since 2020, and had experienced contracts with SAP and work that they've done, and one time there was one little tiny thing that needed to be addressed, I can't even remember, and it was like they were there immediately, they think that there was no, there was no question, it was just, it was handled. So they, they do have a good history with our library system. My choice would be to go with SAP for my personal experiences and what I researched.
And this question maybe for both of you, based on your experience, Janice, I know we went about this as pre-design, but Renee, make sure, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's nothing that would preclude them from being a full design firm, right? Because I think our goal would be to stick with the same firm, not start a different process later down the, I understand, pre-design comes first, but hoping for a long-term partner, there's nothing in the research or so far that would preclude them from being the full project partners.
I don't think so, like I'd want to double check with our attorney to make sure there's not an issue to, to just go with them if we're happy with a pre-designing process. I, I think having the option to, like if we're not happy.
Yeah, obviously, we're not happy for sure.
So I think we can maybe, if we, if you guys decide to do, go with them for just a pre-design process, then when we're ready to kind of go to the next step, we can revisit and make sure legally we can just carry on with them for the whole thing.
That'd be ideal, if we're able and it's appropriate and we're satisfied.
So, at this time, would a motion be appropriate? I would move that we choose SAP for the pre-design process, and pending legal authorization and satisfaction with their pre-design, proceed with them for the remainder of the project.
Is there a second? I'm saying, nobody wants a second? Does anybody want to make another motion?
I'd make a motion that we use the KT tool and speak to what Janice said, I think those are valuable things, they speak to capacity and capability. If they don't get back to us quickly, then that's, that's, that's going to rank the other two lower. I don't, I think Renee, if you could fill out that KT and, and lower the score for the other two, if they have public comments against their responsiveness, that would show that you looked at them against that one, because you're saying here they're all equal in capability and, and capacity. Often when a vendor doesn't get back to you quickly, it's because they're too busy, or they don't value as a client, so that would, that would lower their score.
In my dealings with them so far, they have all been as responsive as, as I need them to be.
So maybe it's just a comment that Janice saw online, social media?
Possibly, yes.
But it's still valid.
Yeah, that's not been my.
Yeah, and it was specifically on paper, good response, not so good, is, is how I condensed the comment.
Right. I just want the tool score, that's all, so that if anybody says, how do we do it? It wasn't just a feeling, it was, we used objective criteria.
So I could translate this narrative into that tool score right now, so it was a scale of like one to five of each category, I believe. Like Paragon and, they would all have, Paragon, Dayquell's, and SAP would all have fives for their capacity and capability, and for their specialized experience and technical competence.
Maybe we can make a motion conditional on KT, so I make a motion that we go with SAP conditional on the KT supporting that.
So do you want me to just follow up with a grid of numbers to reflect what I've said here?
Right, to show them is the higher score.
So are you saying you want to go with SAP, so long as the KT score reflects that?
Yes, that's the motion.
I'm confused. So that means the final decision wouldn't be until next month, or do we leave it to Renee to, to her honesty, to share that KT score with us to, like, if she has the information here, do we hear it now so we can make the final decision, or are we putting this off another month on making a decision?
I think we're memorializing this into a formal tracking document, so should we have that for reference, moving forward to reference that, too?
Okay. So then the move is, could you please rephrase that so I can hear it again?
Motion to approve SAP, and then Renee will provide the supporting documentation for our decision in the form of the KT tool.
Okay. And is the move for pre-design only, or for the entire project?
Do you want to just add your wording onto the motion that Janice originally said?
Yeah.
And then, okay, so Janice, could you rephrase your motion?
Yeah, that would be fine, because I totally agree with having that documentation, I think that's, that's very valid.
All right, so do you want to rephrase your motion?
Sure. I didn't witness a death on the road this afternoon, I can just do this, so. Yeah, if you all see Channel 5 news, Highway 14, or whatever, Channel 3, whatever, when you see it, and then driving back by it to come by here and seeing all the skid marks, so I'm a little, maybe not exact tonight. I move that we choose SAP Design Architects for our pre-design process, and pending legal authorization and acceptance of their pre-design process, that they would continue to handle the entire renovation process backed up by the KT tool ranking all three for documentation.
Okay, good. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, okay. Is there any more discussion before we move into a vote? Okay. Roll call vote, trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
All right, Renee. SAP, as long as that KT tool, okay, matches. Okay. Next on the agenda, review of June conversation with legal counsel regarding collection access. This was handed out or sent to the board in case the public didn't get a chance to see it, I will read it briefly, this is a summary of a closed meeting that we did, we had in July. "In July, the library Board of Trustees met with the library's attorney to ask for guidance on legalities of removing materials, relocating materials, and labeling materials. This conversation stems from comments heard during the public comment portion of the Board of Trustees meetings. Guidance included information about past court cases and issues a court would consider in future cases. No specific action was asked about or guidance on a specific action given. Summaries include takeaways from the cases provided by the attorney, not meant to be a legal interpretation." Island Tree School District versus Pico by Pico. Case concerned removal of books not restricting access or labeling books. Removal books from even a public school library would violate the First Amendment if the reason for the removal was based on the content of the books being unorthodox with respect to politics, nationalism, religion, or other matters of opinion. A public library will be judged differently than a public school library, since a public library is where materials may be found that are unsuitable for protected environments." Sun versus City of Wichita Falls. "Any procedure that allows citizens input that interferes with access to public library materials by other citizens will receive strict scrutiny as to its constitutionality under the First Amendment. With respect to the Fourteenth Amendment, the process will be unconstitutional without a procedure for review and appeal. Restricting access to non-obscene materials in a public library solely due to the content of the materials risks First Amendment violation. The opinion does not provide guidance with respect to labeling library materials." Discussions in the meeting included concerns over removing books, relocating books, which could be considered restricted access, and labeling books. While our attorney did not find any legal precedent regarding issues with labeling, considerations trustees mentioned included ambiguity, stigmatization, objectivity, and sustainability. For historical reference, the library already has in place or has voted on: request for reconsideration, purchase suggestions, sunshine requests, one-on-one meetings with executive staff as requested, a new parent resource website and handout, refreshed and retrained staff on existing ability to note adult presence required for checkout and software, and research and review of rating system feasibility." Because discussion on next steps couldn't be done in a closed session, opening the session up now to discuss some of the things that I think specifically labeling was something that we kept going back to, but I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, so I'm going to open up the board for discussion on thoughts on next steps.
Dana, you have.
You all have lots more opinions in that class.
Yeah, you have some good thoughts on labeling, I thought.
I, I think it would be appropriate to, they're, the library supply companies actually sell little rainbow stickers, and I think it would be appropriate to, to use those on the LGBT content materials. I, I think the benefit of it is that the people who want those materials can find them more easily, the people who want to avoid them. more easily, the people who want to avoid them can avoid them more easily.
I think.
And the criteria exists in the catalog already. The Library of Congress categorizes books, if you look in the, if you look on the desktop version of the library catalog, you look up, you know, whatever book, it will actually give you the Library of Congress classifications for it. And I think if we classify based on that, then we're not, you know, we're not using any one person's, we're not using an arbitrary, you know, we're not using any one organization or any one person's arbitrary set of categories. You know, it's something that the Library of Congress already came up with.
So, I'm a little, I'm unfamiliar with the Library of Congress, so their cataloging. What criteria do they use, Renee, do you know, to decide? Like, is it terms that are used? If I were to look up, like, terms about a book, and I was, if I was to search the subject matter, that's the cataloging?
Yep.
So, what words, though? At what, like, how do we decide which words are included in that?
Well, that gets a little bit, the categories are pretty extensive.
Uh huh.
Because it'll be like, you'll have like LGBT, and then you'll have a, there's a host of subcategories under that. And, you know, that's, that will probably, you know, it's probably going to take some examination of all these categories and try to figure, you know, figure out what's, you know, what's included. You know, it's, it's, I, I don't think you're ever, I don't know that you're ever going to get a perfect system.
I agree. I'd, I'd really like to see the categories and, and I, I agree, I think that's a very viable option.
One of the concerns I have about using specifically a rainbow sticker, and maybe there's different, different stickers we have.
Use being my question.
Is if somebody is, if somebody is not out publicly, or if they are not out to their family, and they want books that reflect who they are and to have these books, my concern is that it would stigmatize, or make those people even less comfortable with, with checking out those books, so.
I think I've seen, I can't remember where, you know, we use, there's fantasy stickers, there's romance novels, there's thriller stickers, there's, they're.
Christian fiction.
Yeah, it's just, there's dozens and dozens and dozens of stickers. I would think we could agree on one that would not cause stigmatization, but would be in our system as referencing that so that the public who are interested, the people who are searching for such books, or the public who want to make sure they don't have to encounter those books, which, I mean, I totally agree on both counts, the First Amendment and the Freedom of Speech, the, you know, 64 Civil Rights Act, I mean, there's so many things that, in the Constitution, pro and con to, to, to support people, their pursuit. But I think we could come up with a sticker, a sticker that wasn't stigmatizing, but could still say, could still warn people that this may not be what you want, or, like you said, enable people to find books they want. I think we need to see what stickers are available, because I'm a kindergarten teacher and I want to see stickers.
Or see stickers.
Good.
There's, there's a lot of different ones, and some of them are quite, you know, some of them are quite subtle.
Okay. Do you guys have any thoughts?
I think that's wonderful, yeah, if you can identify the books. And I, I know Renee said something about genres and things like that. So, there's things that put those books into that category. Can we get a motion to have some kind of recommendations for labeling?
Like, you want me to make a recommendation for labeling?
You know your catalog better than me.
I think that's.
She can't, she's not that.
She can't make a motion?
We have to.
No. Make the motion that she brings a recommendation for us.
Oh.
I mean, I think, yes, this is the direction you all want to go, then the next step would be looking at which things you want to have and identify as, you know, whatever sticker is to chosen, and whether you want to, you know, leave the sticker choice up to staff consensus, or, but I think.
Do they want to choose the stickers, and do we want to choose the categories?
Yeah, I think it's two parts. What stickers are we going to use, and what books are they going to want?
I lived for stickers when I was a teacher, and I, and as an adult actor, I had my stroke. I, I worked very hard for my stickers. They're very important to me.
Actually, what I think I'd like to see is kind of a, as more of a, I mean, I can look up a particular book, I'm looking at one right now on my phone, it gives me the, again, if you look on the desktop side as opposed to the mobile side. It'll give you a list, if you look at the book, it'll say, it'll give you a list of subject topics, and then it'll give you genres, and this particular book I'm looking at is, it fits into three different genres and quite a few subjects. I think what would be helpful, actually, would, and I don't know where you'd get this, Renee, you'd probably be able to find it more easily than I would, to get, I would think the Library of Congress probably publishes a list of the subjects and probably has the broader categories and then the subcategories. So, I would be interested in seeing, in seeing that complete list, which I imagine is going to be pretty long.
Yeah, it, it would not be something we could print out. But we, I could get you a link to, I think they're publicly available online, but I could get you a link to that for.
So, here's something to consider. If we're looking at putting the stickers on books based on Library of Congress subject headings, are, would those subjects be, under books that are pro and con, different topics?
Yeah.
So, if something was a book that was, went against, because we're on the topic, homosexuality, it would be stickered that way?
It would have that same.
It would have that same subject.
Okay.
So, the subject headings don't define whether it's pro or con.
Right.
Or whatever, it's just, this is on this topic.
So, we need to have at least a couple dozen.
Examples.
Examples of, of subject matter, and possibly print off some sticker options that we could choose on. So, I, I move that for the next meeting, since we're supposed to be very specific in our request to Renee, and that was one thing we learned as a board. And back me up, guys, you add your specifics. I am moving that Renee provide the Board of Trustees at the next meeting with a list of two to three dozen major categories. You know, I just, I don't know how broad they are, so give some leeway in there, and that perhaps there could be some research from companies that the library orders from, that, of different sticker choices that may be available so that we can get this done.
Can I also ask that some of, let's say, the last dozen books that have had a request for reconsideration be sent also? I just want to look and see, because the last thing I want to do is make the library do a lot of work and not actually be.
Meeting the needs?
Meeting the needs or, and the requests of the people that are asking for this. Is it, the, the categories of subject headings, is it LGBTQ only? Is that the only thing that you're looking at?
I'd say at this point, yes.
I'd say it's broader than that, but what I would also, and I would like to have a motion for this right now. I appreciate you doing this summary of the closed session of legal, Allison, but there are other things that the lawyer put in his letter that I had a copy of. I would like the full letter from the lawyer, his full disclosure released to the public. Can we do that?
We need your request, ask Harry if he's okay with that. I think the board would vote on whether or not to make that public, because it's a closed meeting, so you would vote in the next.
I'm not sure it should have been a closed meeting, but we, but now that we're saying this is, should be available to the public, we should make it all available to the public.
That's up to the board.
So, I make a motion that we release the lawyer's opinion in full to the public.
Just a quick point of order, there's already a motion on the table. So, you can make that motion, but it needs to be after this motion. After whatever happened.
Kansas, Oregon, the stickers motion.
Yeah, I apologize.
So, we'll just pause and come back to that.
So, a second on the.
Second.
Okay.
To clarify, just, like, what categories of subject headings am I bringing to you? Is it LGBTQ only? Is there anything else you want me to bring?
In reviewing past meetings and comments and concerns that have been expressed by our, the people who come and use the library, it, to me, it seems that is the focal subject that may be addressed right now. If, if in the future there are other subject matter, then maybe that's something we can address in the future.
Yeah, I would be interested in any topics of concern that parents might have spoken about, or guardians may have spoken about that impact minors. I think, for instance, gratuitous violence comes to mind, the rated R conversation we've sort of had. I think it's beyond just that, it's material appropriateness for minors is my concern.
So, what, what topics?
That, that was the question, is, I thought that the motion was to bring two to three dozen of the major categories of subject holdings.
So, violence involving minors, gratuitous sex involving minors, and LGBTQ? Issues, is that?
Those are definitely different topics that would hit different books, for sure. I think it's a good point to, to compare the list against any of the books for reconsideration. If those are the books that the public has been concerned about, what topics were in those books?
Most of the concern, most of the.
That's a category on the form of.
Well, most of the forty or fifty books that got pulled after the one meeting, and I spent quite a number of hours reading and going through the books, I know, Diana, you did also. What was presented in, in that stack of books was mainly the LGBTQ, and in the comments section is mainly LGBTQ. I don't mind adding the other topics if, if we can get, but then we're looking at three different stickers, because you're looking at, at very different issues. You know, horror thriller versus just thriller versus just horror. So, you're, you know, you're looking at different stickers, different labels to be presented also.
Yeah, I certainly think we've heard a significant amount of public comment about sexual materials for minors, regardless of gender orientation. That is a significant.
See, most of what I gleaned was with LGBTQ, but, yeah, I don't, that sounds good to me.
So, I have LGBTQ, any sexuality, and then violence, which, I'll look and see what subject headings might come under that.
I'm not sure how, like, with the, just the sexually explicit stuff generally, I don't, I haven't really looked into how the categories address that.
And, and she is saying for, for teens, for youth, not adults, correct? LGBTQ in general, youth, violence.
Minors.
Minors. So, under eighteen, minors.
So, is that children and youth in our collection?
Okay.
Young adult.
Young adult.
And maybe if you have critical race theory, I don't know if that shows up. Is that a genre? But it's something that, you know.
I don't know if it's a subject heading, I'll look and see.
That's not something that has so far been brought up. I'm, I'm sure there, there'll be a lot of categories we can continue to explore.
Just going to see what comes up under able Mexican D. There's an anti-racism category, I didn't know that until just now.
I think we need to start with just one focus, because we could label every single book in the library for something, and there's only so many staff in the library, there's only so many hours in the day, and there's a bajillion books. And one of the things that we have to understand going into this is people.
Financials.
Order books, yeah, there's a financial obligation, a soft cost of the staff time and a hard cost of the stickers. There's also, you know, books are going to be coming through the library that'll be removious, that, or in a library loan, that won't be stickered, because they'll be coming from other libraries, and that's not something that we have any authority over. So, just want to make sure that, I, I don't, I don't want to get too in the weeds on this, again, because this is just my opinion, that we could, I mean, we could all pick out, you know.
So, let's start with one subject.
Let's see what it looks like.
As a trial, you know.
Before we even, yeah.
So, the motion is revised or back to the original, focusing on LGBTQ categories and stickers, and getting lists from Library of Congress that help us define those books up, and neither shut up.
Is there a second to the motion that Janice just put on the table?
Okay.
Okay. Do a roll call vote, trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye. And then.
John, did you want to make a motion?
I was going to say.
Yeah, we have.
John had a second.
I have another motion, that we make that, the legal opinion in full available to the public.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Trustee Alexander.
Aye.
Trustee Brazil.
Aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Aye.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Moving on to the audit. Okay, we've got Mary, and Mary. There you are. How are you? Good to see you, by the way. I know, I can't see you.
I couldn't see you either, because I didn't know who was talking.
Our audit, so. Mary, we've done our audit for, how many years have we done it now?
Well, my, my company has only been in existence since 2022, so we'll say at least since 2022. But, the, you guys, I believe you guys received it back. Oh, you have a copy.
Yes.
You guys received it.
The, the first question I usually get asked when it comes to audits, or the first thing that everybody wants to know, is that you did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of opinion that I could issue. How you know it's an unmodified opinion is that it means that the first, the, the opinion letter has not been modified, that's literally what it means. It just means there was nothing that stood out that I needed to change the letter in any way. Kind of comparing 22 and 23, your unrestricted cash went down five percent, and your restrictive cash also went down 21 percent. Partly, that's because you've been paying off the debt, and because you've been spending the money that you specifically got for the debt and the capital expenses. So, nothing unusual there. So, because of that, your restricted fund balance went down 21 percent, and then your unrestricted fund balance went down four percent, too, but just because you were spending some of that money. Specifically, if we talk about revenues, your overall tax revenue went up five percent between the two years, and your overall total revenue did go up seven percent between 22 and 23. Your expenses also went up, too, out of everyone that I audit, I don't think anybody's expenses actually went down. Everything costs more, cost of living's higher. Specifically, your collections went up just about two percent, personnel costs went up about three percent, and then your overall operations went up 20 percent. That would probably be the largest category, operations would be your utilities, that's probably your largest expense that did go up, was utilities. Overall, your debt did go up because 59 percent between 22 and 23, but you're now showing, you're now paying some of that debt back, so that's why that specific expense went up. If I kind of take out the building that you bought in 22 and 23, so that you can get more just looking at just numbers to numbers without taking that big expense out, you did go up about 14.5 percent in expenses between the year. If you can kind of compare everything to the budget, you actually received about $189,000 more in income than you had budgeted, and then you also spent $215,000 less than you had budgeted. So, you actually came out of the positive when you look at comparing that your budget between the years. The, when, since you guys have all the pages, that once you get past the financials, the stuff where it starts talking about, it's more in the words, it starts explaining just a little bit more detail in some of those numbers, if you were. If you were having any questions or wanted like a breakdown of like the debt, that would be in there. And I know I went over that really fast, but does anybody have any questions?
I do not, anybody else? Anyone have questions? This isn't something you have to approve.
That was my last question.
No, it's just something, yeah, I mean, not something, but.
Thank you for all the work you put in there. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to the Board of Trustees' vice president election. Since Stephanie stepped down from the board and her term was over, we have a vacant vice president position, so I will open up the floor for nominations.
I move that we have a slate nomination of all officers, and that president would be Echo Alexander, Vice President Diana Brazil, Secretary Janice Hagan, John Garrity, Treasurer, and Allison Toughness, Member at Large. There's a copy of that. Please pass these down. We need a second.
Second. I'd like to discuss this before we move into a vote. Is there a reason that you want to flip everything, especially because this will make it so that for the first couple of weeks, no one will be able to sign checks?
I think we'll continue with checks.
You can't. Diana will not be able, or Echo will not be able to sign checks as president, and there's nobody else who can sign checks currently.
Then we make it effective till we can transfer check signing.
I mean, again, is there a reason that you want to?
We can get into that, and do you want to go into discussion right now?
That's what, yeah, absolutely, that's what I was asking.
Okay. "We need to facilitate communication and feedback with the public better. Over the last year, the president's tenure, significant discord has occurred between her and the public. Suppressing free speech, which has caused elected, elected officers to write. Specifically, state rep Jamie Ray Gragg complained about changing the rules concerning applauding and making sounds during public comment in an ad hoc way. You got a rebuke from the Eastern Commissioner. I write this letter to discuss with you my disappointment of the meeting on March 26. We govern at the will of the people. How well can we govern if we refuse to listen? And from the last meeting, the unlawful order to disperse at the end of the last board meeting in the parking lot. First Amendment provides the right to have freedom of speech, the right of the people to peaceably assemble and petition the government for address of grievances."
Okay.
You've been, you've been the president for a year. I think it's time to get some new officers.
Okay, you do know that there'll be another election in, in December.
I do, and I think we should have that per the bylaws, we should have.
Well, yeah, that can't change. But I want to make a comment to that last comment about the, what happened in the parking lot. I did not know about anything that happened in that parking lot until two weeks after the meeting. So I asked the police officer what the laws were. She said that the city asked that people leave parking lots if the building, if the, if the business is closed. I said, then let's, whatever is standard, that is standard. I then left and got in my car and left. It was not until two weeks later when a member of the public informed me of what happened. So anybody thinking that I was somehow directing the police officer to do something or to call anybody is complete fabrication. I had nothing to do with it, I was at home, I had no clue any of that was going on. I wish it hadn't, because obviously if the, that's why I asked the police officer beforehand what the rules were and the laws were that the city of Nixa usually did in situations like that, and allowed her to then do her job. And so there was no directive given on that one.
I need to speak up. I was present when the officer came up and asked and initiated this conversation. How she executed was her business. Allison honestly did not request this of the officer. It's on the other side.
Okay.
And, and I, I just know that because I was standing nearby when the officer came up, and I paused because I wondered why the officer came up. So I, I can only vouch that Allison did not request the officer to take whatever action the officer did take. I went back this way and went out, I was not witness to anything that happened. And I'm, I'm sorry, because the First Amendment, as well as you say about speech, does authorize freedom to gather. How different communities, I know in Sparta, they interpret some things a little differently than they do in Ozark. So, but, but I, I do have to say, that should not be on her head. I was concerned about the comment on our email because I knew I had been there and the officer had initiated the conversation.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what the officer said.
I, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, John, I totally do. I, I just, I did want to vouch for the moment of the encounter.
I think my comments stand.
Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second, so we'll go to a vote. Trustee Alexander.
What, what are we voting on? This slate, oh.
Trustee Brazil.
Hi.
Trustee Garrity.
Hi.
Trustee Hagan.
Nay.
Correct.
Do we need to make a motion for accommodation of the treasurer and check signing?
The bank will need approved minutes, so it won't go into effect until next month, after the minutes are approved, and then we'll have signatory changes automatically. We don't need any special resolution from that, so.
So there's no concern of a delay?
She could sound like she's in control.
You're a signatory at this point, so I'll check with the bank and make sure, but. I'll check with the bank.
Next motion, next item of the new business is our 2024 tax levy.
You're gonna need to read this to the public.
Current. This is entitled for public comment section for the tax levy?
Yes, there's a specific public comment section for the tax levy.
In public comment section, ask as usual if there have been submissions. Then this meeting includes our annual vote to set the tax levy, and the law provides for a public hearing, and we will give an opportunity for the public comment on the topic later in the agenda. So Renee, do you want to give us an overview of the tax levy, and then you can open for discussion?
So you have numbers, these all come from the county clerk through the state and through the state auditor. It's information about last year's assessments as well as 2024's. The current tax levy sits at one point one eight six one, our voted levy is point two zero. And the state auditor does a formula to let us know what, what we can set it at. So point one eight six one is the highest that we can set it at, which would be the same as last year. This is a non-assessment year, so this is typical that you don't see any change in the tax levy calculation. If the set at point one eight six one, then the revenues would be approximately three point four six million dollars. That might wiggle a little bit depending upon delinquent taxes and things like that, so that's just an estimate. That is about a hundred thousand dollars more than last year, and that's almost entirely attributed to new, new builds and new construction, as opposed to any increase in assessments since it's a non-assessment year, so. In assess, in assessment years, it's a little more complicated, and I get into Hancock Amendment and all that stuff, which I can go into now, but it doesn't really relate to this year because we don't have any changes with what the levy is. So just let me know if you have questions.
Any questions or comments from the board? Can we do open to public comment as well?
Yes, if anybody has a comment specifically on the tax levy.
This time we open to public comment specific to the notice of the levy hearing. If there's any public commentary specific to the...
This is not if you signed up.
Not for, for all.
Or any other issue, this is just about the tax levy.
Tax levy, well, about taxes?
No.
No. Anything about taxes?
No.
Anyone else? Any other discussion needed on the topic? Our next item of...
Well, you need to actually vote on it.
Correct. So we're voting to accept the...
The proposed tax levy of one eight six one.
Thank you. Accept the motion.
I move to approve the proposed tax levy.
Second.
Second.
We'll move to a roll call vote. Trustee Brazil.
Um, aye.
Trustee Garrity.
Hi.
Trustee Hagan.
Aye.
Trustee Toughness.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on our agenda for new business is public comment policy. I have a prepared comment, or keep my pass up to... I'm gonna read my comments to keep them succinct. Today I request that the board discuss the vital role of public input in our decision-making process. This trustee is one of our most fundamental tasks, is soliciting and considering feedback from the members of the public whom we serve as a Christian, as a county public library. To ensure we are fulfilling this responsibility, we need to allow as many members of the public as possible to share their comments with us in a reasonable amount of time during these meetings and a part of this board's business. Seeing how much detail and time has often been put into public comment over the last year, frequently including detailed and thorough handouts and reports, we need to allow adequate time for commenters to present that research, since only their video testimony is currently included in the information shared in maybe the recording of these meetings. Since this board's business directly impacts operations of Christian County Library, we should be open to hearing comments from the community and patrons before we vote, make changes, or set a course of action for the future. I therefore make a motion to update the public comment policies as follows. Those that have handouts, you'll note the changes are dictated on the back, that's helpful for comparison. First paragraph, no more than sixty minutes of the regular meeting of Christian County Board of Trustees will be set aside for public comment. Each commenter may speak once per meeting for a maximum of three minutes. The public comment period will be held, will be heard before old business and new business are discussed. We will strike the third paragraph. After recognition by the president, presiding officer of CCL's Board of Trustees, the presenter must state their name to be recorded for the meeting minutes. Anyone refusing to identify themselves should be prohibited from addressing the board. I believe that's a holdover from previously to having signups. And strike the sentence at the beginning of the fifth paragraph. As a general rule, the board will not respond to public comments at the time that they are made. More than ten speakers are signed up tonight, there are fourteen. I would request that this change be effective immediately so that all fourteen speakers can speak tonight at our public comment time at the end of this meeting for no longer than sixty minutes. The policy can then be updated in the policy manual following the meeting. The order of appearance in public comment can be moved to the agenda at the next meeting. You're second.
Second.
A roll call vote.
There should be discussion.
Thank you. Discussion.
I don't understand why they don't have to identify themselves.
They do when they're signed up.
Pardon me?
They do when they're signed up.
Okay, so. I understand, Echo, that if they're coming up, I want to know that that's Sheila Michaels or that's Laura Umpetner. I, I want them to tell me who they are so I can follow their comments.
I don't believe that we've been following this procedure. Please correct me if I'm wrong, board, I think that the president has called them by name, and they have appeared just to see.
Okay, okay, thank you, I just, I need to connect the person with the comment. So, okay, that takes care of that.
I think Tori is helping us ensure we capture the information, and then the president is calling them.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's just, I, I would get lost.
For sure. Other discussion?
So why don't we just keep paragraph, keep paragraph three, so then everybody's identified? Because I don't know that, you know, it's, it's not such an imposition for somebody to come up and say, I'm John Doe and I'd like to comment.
Do you want to, to have them state their name to be recorded into the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
I would be open to amending the motion. Any other discussion?
My, my question is about the striking the sentence in the fifth paragraph about the general, the board will not respond to public comments. I think that that is, and I could be wrong, misunderstood. The board as a whole isn't going to respond, they're, like, we as a whole can't vote, make a vote on something that's not on the agenda. So I think that's what that's stating, is that we as a board as a whole will not respond, but we as individual board members are allowed to respond by asking questions of clarification, things like that that we've seen in the past. Am I, am I right in that interpretation? Does anybody know, and assuming that, that we leave that on there just so that the general public, because a lot of people that come regularly understand the fact that we can't just add something to the agenda in the middle of a meeting, but somebody who's new, who might be coming to speak for the first time may not, so that may just help to clarify that piece.
Do you want to amend that as a amendment?
Yeah, so I would amend that to the motion as well, that we keep that on there. If it needs to be reworded, we could say, well, the board will not respond to public comments by...
As a whole, as a group. Individual board members may ask questions and make comments.
Yeah, because I think that's the second paragraph then, right? Janice connects, you're concerned that board may ask clarifying questions. So there's still allowance for that, correct?
Yeah, but just clarifying that the board as a whole will not respond to public comment.
So add that amendment to the motion.
So, so just to be clear, that would, in Echo's line item here, so as a general rule, the rule, the board as a whole, and then the same thing she, she has, and then instead of the board in the beginning of the second sentence, change that to individual members may ask, or individual trustees. May ask clarifying questions, is that what you're saying?
To change it to... That's my understanding.
So it would read, if I'm understanding, as a general rule, the board as a whole will not respond to public comments at the time they are made. Individual trustees may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action at their discretion. Questions for staff about library operations should be made during normal business hours. I just want to be...
I don't know that you can say take action because that goes back to the point of an agenda has been set and action can't be taken at the time of the comment and questions. So I don't know that you can say take action. It may be requested to be put on...
That's currently the language in the post.
Okay.
Yeah, it shows that, yeah.
Okay. Well, we can't take action because the thing needs to be amended, so how do we amend that? Other, so that we're technically correct.
I think it depends on what the action is.
Uh huh.
You know, we can't, we can't vote, we can't.
Correct.
We can't make motions on what they're saying, so.
Right, okay.
So Allison, do you want to amend your amendment to be that individual board members may ask about how individual board members may ask clarifying questions?
Or comment as a whole.
As a whole.
Discretion, to strike out take action.
Wait, is that different than what I just read? Are you doing something different?
We're still in paragraph five. I asked Allison wanted to add...
So I'd just say board members may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action at their discretion.
Individual.
Individual trustees is what we had.
Individual trustees.
Thank you.
Individual trustees may ask, if that's what I'm understanding you to say, may ask clarifying questions, comment, or take action.
Yeah. And that take action could be, I'd like to add this to next month's agenda.
Yes. Or I'd like to ask Renee to look into that or something.
Okay.
So how, how many amendments is that? We have as a whole, and then we have the trustees may. So I have two amendments so far, what, are there any others?
I think you could just restate the motion and say with amendments, or with amendments as discussed. If you, if you are all in consensus and going to vote for this.
Keep paragraph three.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I have a quick question as the timekeeper. With the no more than sixty minutes while you're revising, because this has come up with me with the thirty minutes, does that include trustee comments? Is that a part of the, that is how it is now. So now the thirty minute time clock starts and that period entails everything.
So trustees were making comments, it would shorten the number of speakers. But if we're expanding to sixty minutes, we may still have a relative number of speakers, but our comments are not part of their three-minute presentation.
What I have noticed in the past is some people are worried or misunderstand that that thirty-minute time period includes trustee comment and question. So this is a chance to clarify that.
I would think with, I'm interpreting with the sixty-minute expansion, that would allow for that without impeding speakers too much.
Yeah, it would potentially allow up to twenty speakers if there was no other discussion or question.
But if we do have discussion, knowing it, it may cut it down just a little because of the comment section. Because I don't want my comments and questions to take away from a person's three-minute presentation. But that time will have to be accounted for. So that would be part of the sixty minutes and that would dictate how many people get to speak. I mean, I'm not picking up and just speak just to not let people speak. But, you know, if we have, if anybody, if we have a legitimate question, I, I don't want people to be offended if they missed a chance.
Yeah, the basis for my thought on the sixty minutes was looking historically at the number of speakers that we'd had and it seemed to not go higher than ten or twelve. And so I thought at sixty minutes, it would allow twenty speakers at three minutes per. So knowing that we've not likely had twenty speakers, it would allow the same sixty minutes for twelve or thirteen speakers and additional commentary or clarification.
That's how, there were good times. Months ago, I had it in my notes, I had a question, but we had a lot of speakers and I didn't hesitate to speak up or interrupt to take away from the time restriction.
Yeah, with sixty minutes, my thought was that was an appropriate amount of time to accommodate on average our number of speakers enrolled as well as respect the time of the board and the staff involved.
Thank you.
Striking the balance. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we can move to roll call vote. Trustee Brazil?
Aye.
Trustee Garrity?
Aye.
Trustee Hagan?
Aye.
Trustee Tucker?
Nick.
Seeing none, motion carries.
And who was the second for that? I don't know if I have that.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, so at this point, we will move into the public comment policy noting that the time is seven, seven thirteen on my watch. Seven twenty-one on the screen. Tori, you got it for an hour?
And Allison, I knew you had a, a time conflict this evening.
I'll just leave what I need to do.
Okay. She had a family time conflict, so we'll make sure to...
How do you want to do that?
Do you want to do it as the speakers?
It's totally up to you. You can talk to Allison if you want about how she did it.
Allison, do you have a preference?
I mean, last month, they handed everything out to us before. Anyway, they all came up at once and that cuts back on the amount of time in between speakers. And so, I know we don't have twenty speakers tonight, but...
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, so.
That's right down.
Tori, you have those handouts?
I have a couple, but you should just ask any speaker that has a handout.
And then I'll give you the ones that came up. Sign up to speak already, do you have a handout?
Anybody that signed up with me.
Please bring us forward at this time.
Do you want me to bring all to you or to them?
You need to pass one out to each of them.
I think we just witnessed the coup from the new kid on the block.
We are not yet open to public comment.
Thank you.
Any other speakers that are signed up, commenters that have?
Echo? Echo? I had a handout, but I won't need to pass it out based on what was discussed.
It's right here.
Oh, okay, you can do that.
Sounds like we've got it. Thank you. Last one, any other handouts?
That was fine.
Yeah. Yep.
Dave? I just was curious of your name so I could...
Sure.
Laura Umphinor. Yes. Okay, thank you. Because I just want to make sure and get you with the correct, with the correct form. Thank you, Laura. You're welcome.
All right, this time we will begin the sixty-minute public comment time. The first speaker up is Sheila Michaels. I'd ask if you had a handout that you maybe identified that handout is. I don't think they're all labeled, so I want to make sure that the board is aware of which handout is yours. Have you had one? So Sheila Michaels. Elena, you are second to sign up.
Just wait, just a second. Let me get it ready here. My regular timer didn't want to come up. It's a different one. It's kind of weird, right?
Tori?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a minute.
It was great.
And then the one hour. Had it all set up for the other systems, but I just got to get one hour in here. All right, and the one hour timer, just start here and let it go.
Thank you.
All right, go for it.
Evening. My handout looks like the blue square infographic. Thank you. I wanted to introduce myself. I'm Sheila Michaels. I am a mom, community member, educator, librarian, and I have the honor of being the librarian of the year this year. I was very honored by that. And what I, what I wanted to share with you is a program that I've done called Bookbag over the last three years. And a lot of the reasons why I was named School Librarian of the Year, first of all, it was my work for intellectual freedom. And we had a lot of book challenges in our next school district. And then the other things that I've done have been community outreach programs to help families and children during the summer. We all know that during the school year, kids are available to get food hygiene items, even period kits for girls. They are very well-supported in our school district. But during the summertime, there are times when families don't have access to these things. So I created this Bookbag program and that allows for families to come in. They can get all the books they want. All the books are donated. They're theirs to keep. I'm a very strong proponent that, of course, I want people to use the public and school libraries, but kids need to have a home library as well. So families were able to come in and build basically a home library over the course of the summer. We gave away period shifts for girls. We gave away a lot of snacks. We gave away just toiletry kits, hygiene kits for anyone. The last night of our program, we had a school supply giveaway. We had over two hundred people attend that giveaway and we were able to supply full families with their school supply needs for the year. And I, and I honestly, I'm a, I'm a little stunned at some of the drastic decisions that have been made tonight. And I know some comments have been made that because the board or because the board doesn't listen to the public or they don't take feedback from the public. I want to make you aware that just because someone doesn't come and speak at a meeting, it doesn't mean that they have feedback. Speaking at a meeting and sending an email are not the only forms of feedback. Feedback are those amazing statistics that Dana shared with us earlier in the evening. The thousands of people that are benefiting and using Christian County Library System, the hundreds of families and people that I saw this summer. I'm sorry, that's distracting. The feedback is that families like the Christian County Library System. They trust the Christian County Library System. You do not have participation numbers like that without a strong library system. And a strong system comes with good and strong leadership. And that is what we've had over the past year. And I fully trust our former, our former board president, our library directors at each site. We have a fantastic library system. And I just want to make you aware that it also feedbacks. Thank you.
Can you identify your handout for us?
Yes, it's the spreadsheet. Last month, our director gave information about the pros and cons of Mobius and Missouri Evergreen for interlibrary loan purposes. To recap and drag this point back up again, our director still sits on the board as treasurer of Mobius, which I still believe is a conflict of interest. The costs she presented last month were forty-two thousand dollars annually for Mobius compared to fifteen thousand dollars for Missouri Evergreen. And with a bizarre note next to this amount, she interjected speculation that the cost could increase for Missouri Evergreen without state funding subsidization. I don't know about you, but I've received a lot of bill increases over the last several years. So wouldn't it have been fair to add a note about possible increases next to both amounts? Also, you should be aware of a cost that appears to have been withheld from the board. I did not see or hear any mention of the cost of the Coolcat Consortium catalog, an additional cost that taxpayers bear if our library continues to use Mobius. Missouri Evergreen software would eliminate the need for that additional software and cost. I attempted to find the cost of Coolcat in the budgets put together by the director, but nothing is itemized. Based on the quarterly consortia costs that I've handed to you from the trustee packets this calendar year, taxpayers have already spent fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars on the Mobius Coolcat category. That's obviously a huge difference and we're now already more than seventeen thousand dollars over the consortia budget disclosed by the director just last month. So I urge you to please look into what additional costs may have not been disclosed to you in an itemized manner. What are we on track to spend this year for a system that has not been functional for four months now? This is not my job as a patron to sort through library budgets. Believe it or not, I have a life and I do not enjoy this. The director answers to the board who serves the community, so it would be much appreciated to get to the bottom of actual costs to protect taxpayer funds and use our resources wisely. Well, since she's sitting right here with us this evening, maybe we should just ask the treasurer of Mobius for a refund of tax dollars for four months of services not provided. Missouri Evergreen would not just save us money, though. Let's not forget that this software could be used to catalog age-inappropriate material in a way that's more consistent with Christian County community values. And I believe that the director's question last month about whether this is just about the money is a red herring and is honestly offensively disingenuous. Lastly, I was one of the peaceful patrons lawfully gathered in the parking lot last month when the NIXA Police Department forced us to leave, stating that the former board president had made this request. This was an unreasonable response and an abuse of power. But because we are peaceful, law-abiding citizens, we respectfully dispersed. This is not how things should be and I just want to thank the board. I appreciate you addressing that. Thank you.
I'd like to pause here to make sure I have the time to make a comment. As I said, I, I don't know how the police officer addressed you. I don't know what their training is, what the city policies are, how they deal with crowds. I can only state again, and I'm not just, I'm not trying to play pros and cons. I was there when the officer came up and asked the question. Allison did not direct her to take the actions or speak as she spoke. That was that individual's interpretation of her job at that time and place. And, and that's just to, we are puppeteers for the police officer and we have to obey what they tell us also just as much. On the, on the Mobius and versus Evergreen, I, I also would like to know, you know, how the finances go for not having service for this period of time. I appreciate the cost differences. I, I do know, although the cataloging is different, because we've been discussing this for some time, so I've, I've been following through a little bit. The number of books that we would have access to would be greatly reduced. The effort to retrain, and I'm not saying this is pro or con. I'm saying what another factor is, it's about a two-year process of transitioning. It's retraining all the clients of the library as well as all the staff. And, you know, these are factors that need to be considered in this.
I'm aware. It's a pass.
Yeah, and, and so I just want...
But worth looking into.
Yes, and...
And that's why I keep, I keep banging that drum.
Okay.
I think it's worth it.
You go for it.
Can I respond to, am I allowed to respond to what the police officer did say?
Sure.
Okay, because I, I did see you and you were about twenty feet away or so from us. So I don't know that you heard the full context.
No, I did not hear anything that happened outside the doors. I was only heard the contact in here.
So I do know that you were there, but you weren't close enough necessarily to hear the entire context of it. And we did press the police officer to ask who she got that request from and she specifically said the board president. And we do have it on, we have it on video because we pulled out our cameras and started videoing to make sure we had proof of what had happened. She did clarify that, so we were aware that she had the impression, at, at the very least, that that came from Allison to force us to leave. We even asked her to check with her supervisor, which she then stepped away, came back and just doubled down and said that Allison had asked us to leave, so we needed to leave. So I just wanted to clarify that too.
Appreciate your clarification.
I wasn't sure how much you heard of that.
No, I, I had not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker Laura Umphinor? Following Laura is Amy. Laura, which was your handout?
Pardon me?
Which was your handout?
Oh. Yeah. All right, we all know who my name is. So last month, it turned out that it became a pretty heated exchange of individuals. And the excuse was my sign, my shirt, and the words that I spoke. And all I have to say to those people are, how does it feel to be called names? And to be given titles associated with hate, fascist, white nationalists? How's that feel? Doesn't feel too good, does it? And yet that is what you have been doing for the last twenty-two months coming in here in your state, public-funded library. For the last twenty-two months, you've tried to put your beliefs on locally elected, or I guess you're not elected, appointed people who serve all the people, not just a few. And for that, I say, when you keep doing the same thing over and over and over again and expecting the different outcome, that's insanity. Per Albert Einstein. And again, I'm sorry that some people attend cult-based churches that implore hate to their flock. Jesus was all about love. White nationalism is a bastardized form of Christianity that tries to set white people above all others. And as President Johnson once said, "If you can convince the lowest white man that he is better than the best colored man, he won't notice that you're picking his pocket." Hell, get him someone to look down upon and he'll just empty his pockets for you. I brought here today with me a summary of Project 2025. Now that's a real thing. CRT is not. This is the platform from the Heritage Foundation, which is a GOP think tank who communicated directly several times with Donald Trump and J.D. Vance, who wrote the foreword on it. A recent recorded interview with two men that posed as investors spoke to the sponsor of Project 2025 and co-author Russell Voight. He stated in this on-air recording that he's not worried about Trump distancing from Project 2025 and that Trump will push back on it. But Trump intends on fulfilling Project 2025 through executive orders, et cetera. Inside Project 2025 is designed to denigrate the LGBTQ persons and to take away their rights. That's part of Project 2025. This is fascist white nationalism. Part of their demonization is gays are more prone to sexual deviancy. I will speak later about who are the deviants? White, male, female persons. It's not gay people. There's all kinds of public information.
Next up, Amy.
My name is Amy Hookstrath. I'm a resident of NIXA.
Next speaker will be Tori Warcox.
The Christian County Library System has a total of tens of thousands of adult library cardholders from all walks of life. The small group of people who are coming to every board meeting and complaining about the same things over and over represent at best a tiny fraction of a percent of all adult cardholders. And yet they are essentially holding the board hostage at these meetings with their made-up problems. Imagine what could be accomplished if they would put the same time, energy, and passion into addressing actual problems in our society such as poverty, food insecurity, or domestic violence. The problem with this small group of people is that they desperately want to pretend that everyone else in Christian County feels and lives the same way they do. And that couldn't be further from the truth. They fail to acknowledge that our... They fail to acknowledge that our county, just like every other county across the nation, is made up of a wide range of citizens, many of whom think differently, worship differently, or not at all, have different cultures, love differently, and identify differently than them. Oh, they know we exist. They just don't think that we matter. Or worse, they wish that we would just go away. But the thing is, we're not going anywhere. Luckily, our amazing library director and staff don't share that same dangerously narrow viewpoint. They have done an excellent job of making our public library system exactly what it should be, a representation of the entire populace. Every person of every age deserves to walk into a public library and to be able to find themselves and their family reflected in the pages of a book. A public library is for everyone, not just for one group of people. It is for the conservative and also for the progressive. It is for the Christian and also for the Jew, the Muslim, and the atheist. It is for the heterosexual person and also for the LGBTQ person. It is for the Republican and also for the Democrat. It is for the white person and also for the person of color. Not only should every person be able to find themselves reflected in the pages of a book, but they should be able to learn about other kinds of people who are different from them in order to be able to move through the world with greater tolerance, compassion, and understanding. And I have one more little paragraph, but I'm going to skip it and go off the cuff for a minute, so I'm probably not going to sound quite as eloquent. Like Sheila Michaels, I too am horrified at what I have witnessed at this meeting tonight. First of all, and I really wish that I had a chance to put together my thoughts on this, but the idea of putting LGBTQ stickers on books is horrific and tragic, okay? Believe it or not, queer equals bad or queer equals abnormal is not a fact. It's an opinion of some people. And if you put these stickers on these books, what you're telling our queer youth, not to mention adults, but let's focus on the youth, is that their very existence, their very identity, requires a warning label. And I am not okay with that, and I know a lot of people aren't okay either. Also, Allison, thank you for your service.
Yes.
You've been an excellent president.
Next speaker, Cory Wilcox. Speaker after that is Kevin Bright.
Good evening. My name is Cory Wilcox. I was born and raised right here in Christian County. My wife Elizabeth and I have three kids, ages twelve, eight, and six. They'll soon be fourth-generation graduates from NICSa schools. Tonight, I'm here to express my thanks to the Christian County Public Library trustees and staff for making sure the diversity of families in our community and beyond is fairly represented in our public library. My oldest kiddo, Kate Man, he had a best friend from preschool and a girl whose family looks quite different from mine. Kate has two great moms. Turns out, she, their family has an agenda that looks much like ours. It's doing laundry, it's packing lunches, it's wiping noses, scary stuff. The public library for us has always been a valuable resource for explaining the differences in family structures like this to Kate Man in age-appropriate ways. And this has helped him grow into the kind of fierce friend that I would hope any of you would want your children to be. He understands that representation matters, so thank you for making sure Kate and her family continue to be represented here fairly. Likewise, my youngest child, Asher, has a rare neuromuscular condition, which means he uses a wheelchair for mobility, a trach for breathing, and a gastronomy tube to eat. It doesn't always look pretty, but like all of us, he wishes to see himself in the books that he and other kids read, because representation matters. So thank you again for maintaining balanced and considerate procurement policies that ensure people like my son can be fairly represented here. Friends, I can't imagine books that feature kids like my son being segregated to a special shelf because it's such a sensitive topic. It sounds crazy to me, but then again, with empathy, I can think about how Kate and her family most feel right now entering libraries that have been viciously pressured to sense of books featuring real kids and real families that simply look like hers. Board, those who say they represent some majority when making such requests are mistaken, and here's why the majority is not able to be here most Tuesday nights. We are busy, busy at soccer practice, Cub Scout events. I'm missing a PTO meeting tonight for this. We are very busy, but we are not aloof. We are radically aware of the dangers facing our youth. They highlight not the need for less access to books, but for more access to meaningful connections with neighbors, supportive adult relationships, and more real grownups who are properly trained and educated in what predatory grooming and child abuse actually looks like and where it is most likely to occur. As someone who's worked in child welfare, I can assure you that our shared effort to prevent such evils are diminished, and children are put at risk when these terms are improperly used to target safe and caring public servants and institutions like this one. Keeping children safe is something everyone in this room agrees about. And so I believe the tone of these public comments needs to shift to gratitude. So once again, on behalf of busy parents and diverse families in our community, thank you for your service. Thank you for giving fair representation to everyone.
Kevin Wright is up, and Mike Miller is next. Kevin, would you have a handout?
I don't. I don't. I've changed a lot of what I've said. There's been some movement here, and it's been answers to prayers. I empathize with this gentleman and his child. You know what? We love our children. That's why we have all come here. Our children are so important, and we've got a difference in opinions of how we think our children should be raised. The guidelines I go by are very different than some that are here. Mothers, fathers, and grandparents have consistently stated, "We do not want that material." And we all know what I'm talking about. We don't want that material in front of our children. It does not represent our community as a whole. The citizens of Christian County have been persistent and reasonable, and yet you have made no real effort to compromise. There's been compromise tonight. I love that. That's great. You know what? God's moving, and our prayers are being answered. There's no real effort to compromise in the past or have a simple conversation. In the past, this board and the director have been hostile and antagonistic. They seem to think that they could intimidate and ignore us. Those conversations at the meetings have been a series of them trying to convince themselves and us that they have some knowledge or power that overrides what is very clear. You will not be successful. Our commissioners have now replaced three board members. God's moving, and we're going in a good direction. This is only the beginning. We are not going anywhere. We will be heard. Our children will be safe. We are the children of a covenant, a covenant we have made with Almighty God. We're not interested in what the ALA, these people or the lawyers, think is best for our children, and we'll not compromise that. God's Word clearly identifies the character and plans of our enemy, the enemy of our children. In Daniel, he says, "He shall speak pompous words against the Most High, shall prosecute the saints of the Most High, and shall intend to change tithings and laws." At the last meeting, Reggie asked why the Ten Commandments are not posted here. Those commandments were the foundation used by our ancestors for our system of justice and our founding documents. Our ancestors were willing to sacrifice everything for us to be free and blessed. It would be wise to pay attention to the Word of God and not stray from who we are. God has blessed our nation because we have made a covenant with Him. It seems wise to stick to what already works. The Bible, the bestselling book of all time, warns us not to break our covenant with God. There's also a warning to those that defy what is true and dabble with the laws. Daniel 11:32, "And such as do wickedly against the covenant shall be corrupt by flatteries; but the people that do know their God shall be strong and do exploits." I pray for this change, this course change, and will not continue. But you'll not continue to flatter yourselves. You know what? When we defy God, it's very dangerous, and it concerns me for you. I pray for all these people that disagree with me. I'm not here to be your enemy. I'm here to help. And if your house burns, or if you need help on the side of the road, I'll be one that will be there to help.
Excuse me. I'd like to make a comment. I appreciate what you said, and I have listened to you. I have listened to your family, and I do appreciate it. My effort as trustee is to try to be unbiased, to try to research. One of the things that does keep coming up is just the founders of the nation did keep Christianity, the word "Christianity," out of key documents. In fact, it was founded as a secular nation. Our founders, I'm reading this from...
Go ahead and quote your source, please.
May I, please, for my... May I finish my comments? You don't get to question me yet. I get to make comments at this point. Our founders believed in a supreme being, but you will not find the word "Jesus Christ" or "Christian Nation." I happen to be a Christian. I will claim that. But in trying to be unbiased, the Declaration of Independence mentions a Creator but does not identify Him by name. It acknowledges a Creator. And it's not, Christianity is not specifically listed or mentioned in the Constitution or Bill of Rights. And the First Amendment said that "the Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion specifically for this country." The founding for all of this is because they were fleeing religious persecution in the home countries. It's not a denial of belief. It's not an opposition to beliefs, but to be an inclusion of beliefs. And that's where I tried to come from. And that may be satisfactory or not satisfactory to people, but I tried to respect... Yes, I believe in a Creator. Yes, but I believe in the Bill of Rights and the Constitution. And I tried to follow the bylaws of the original founders of the country. And I do respect what you said, but this is where I'm coming from, is from the Bill of Rights and the Constitution. And just saying, we should all... I look for inclusion in, as someone previously mentioned, you know, Muslims or Jewish or, you know, what? So many religions around here. There's so many churches. To try to include all people and respect their wishes and to try to comfort and meet the needs for all groups and not get too narrow-focused on one group. Although I do understand that the churches here are more representative of how you speak, and I acknowledge that, and I appreciate that. But we do have a diverse community, and we try to, in our addressing of things, keep in mind, we are serving a broad population. Regardless of majorities and minorities, we are trying to meet the needs of all respectfully.
Can I respond to this? And I won't go into detail, but you gave an opinion.
Yes, sir.
And you gave your interpretation. But one thing that's always overlooked is those that were fleeing religious persecution were those that believed in God. That was the Christians. That was the founders. That was the church. And that church and that covenant is what came and led us to those founding documents. It was to save. God's people are very blessed, and those that are not God's people at this point have an opportunity to be. And that's all we hope. We just hope for those blessings that we receive. God loves all, and we want all to be saved. We want all to come to the point where they have the comfort and knowledge to know who their Savior is and that there is hope beyond this world. I'll just leave it at that.
Next speaker. Your handout is the Simple Action Plan. Is that correct?
Yes. Good evening. I have a short story to share tonight. But first, I want to thank you for taking a big step a little bit earlier on content in the library. And I altered my notes a little bit, but I just want to reinforce your work as you move forward. So my story is titled "Avoiding the Unexpected." You are a parent, and you bring your son and daughter with you to the auto repair shop. And while standing at the service counter, all three of you notice the calendar on the wall featuring a bare-breasted woman, nipples and all, holding a torque wrench. That was unexpected. You and your children push your shopping cart to the checkout line. You roll past the soda display, the chips, and the candy. Then, right before the conveyor belt, you see that rack of magazines, Playboy, Penthouse, Husler. And they greet those innocent eyes. That was unexpected. Your children are at your neighbor's playing outdoors. It's hot, and they want a cool drink of water. Entering the front door, they walk through the living room. To their left, they see a laptop and a parent masturbating. That was unexpected. You know, most parents want to avoid the unexpected, but it's not easy. Avoiding the unexpected is what many of these parents have been talking about here for months. And tonight, you took a step to look at that issue straightforward. We don't want to see the unexpected when we're looking for books to read. And I want to be clear, we're not asking for any book ban. What we would like, and you're moving toward, is helping parents avoid the unexpected when they're looking for books in the library. Sexually explicit material showing genitalia, intercourse, and naked bodies, that sort of thing. The question is, how do you provide a safe, sexploitation-free environment for children and parents so they can avoid these unexpected images? So the board, you have the responsibility. You took some action tonight, which is great. You are responsible and can take action on the books on the shelves. So we've been asking for your help, and tonight, you took a baby step on the issue. I want to thank you for that. I look forward to what you'll be doing. I want to add that we've got many people in the audience and in the community can help you with some of the decision-making or content issues. If you need more manpower to look at the issue, we'll be there to help. Just let us know, and be assured that we'll step forward and give you help from all sides. Thanks.
Thank you. After that, Juanita Wright.
I want to say thank you, board. I want to comment tonight on a book that you have in the library that I'm very thankful for you carrying. Pick up where Kevin left off. It is the number-one seller of all time. It sold more copies than all the books in all four libraries put together. It's been somewhere between six to seven billion copies of it since it was created by God. There's about eighty million copies a year that's made of it. Congress, at the end of the Revolutionary War, had ten thousand copies printed. They used them as textbooks in the school. Wasn't that a wonderful use of tax money? There's only four original copies that actually exist today. This book has sixty-six books written by thirty-six authors, fifteen-hundred years spanned of time. Yet, it's the most modern, most accurate, up-to-date book that's ever been written. It's a light to our pathway. It's a lamp unto our feet. We know that the Word of God must be the guideline to determine what's right, what's wrong, what's good, and what's evil. God said in Psalms ninety-five and sixteen, "Who will stand up for me against the evil-doers?" That's the reason why we're here. Ninety percent of the people that comes to these meetings because we're concerned about the children and we're concerned about the families. And we know what this evil stuff does to try to destroy the lives of so many. You know, there's somewhere around seven to eight billion people in the world. They tell us that about a hundred and fifty-three thousand die every day, sixty thousand every hour, a hundred and six every minute. In the time we've been here, there's been somewhere around eight, nine thousand people that slipped off into eternity. And we need to remember, time is short. And Paul tells us that after death comes the judgment, that the books are going to be open. And I got news for you. It's not going to be the queer's Bible. The bathhouse won't even be mentioned. None of these books are going to be brought up. There's two books that's going to be open. One is the Book of Works, and the other one is the Book of Life. Revelation 20:15 tells us that those whose name are not found written in the Lamb's Book of Life are going to be cast into the lake of fire. You better make sure that you have a relationship with Christ. About three months ago, lady did a book report about two gay penguins. She identified herself, found out she was a penguin. I read this book. I found out I was a sinner, needed a Savior. But I kept reading, and I found the answer, the Redeemer, and His name is Jesus Christ of Nazareth. God loved us. He gave His only begotten Son. He made His move. He gave His life. Now the choice is ours. Make sure that you know Him.
Next speaker is Juanita, and after that, Dave Wright. Next speaker is Juanita, and after that, David Rice.
My topic is the Christian County Library's membership and endorsement of the American Library Association, both in its handbook and in all of its policies. The culture and bias of the ALA does not match up with Christian County's values. As I read through the summary of the Freedom to Read Statement and the Library Bill of Rights, one overarching self-righteous attitude contained in the text stood out loud and clear to me. The ALA believes that it is their right, their mission, and their responsibility to override the authority of the parents in their children's reading. At the same time, almost in the same sentence, these tyrants insist that it is the complete responsibility of the busy mom with three kids and a baby on her hip to frantically run from shelf to shelf, attempting to sort through the minefield of pornography and age-inappropriate books, scattered throughout the youth and children's section with each of her kids. That's naive and idealistic and discriminatory toward already overburdened and overwhelmed families. A lot of homeschoolers have to use the library. For example, the material selection policy states, "We support the Library Bill of Rights and the Freedom to Read Statement in providing free and open access to our materials for all age groups. Children are not restricted to particular areas of the library. Our staff does not monitor the materials that children choose. The responsibility for the reading or viewing choices of children rests entirely with parents or legal guardians." This mantra of unlimited access for all, no matter how age and appropriate the content, with full responsibility placed on parents, is repeated several times throughout these statements. And in order to double and triple down on the library's absolute freedom from any responsibility in the placement of these books, number five in the Freedom to Read Statement says this. "It is not in the public interest to force a reader to accept the prejudgment of a label characterizing any expression or its author as subversive or dangerous." No labels. That's in your handbook. So what are you going to do? I don't know how you're going to deal with that when you're talking about labels. Here's one thing I do know. Those books, once they're labeled, need to be moved in their own section so that the busy mom would know what section to steer her three kids away from. And folks, I'm telling you, that's all we're asking for. I'm not asking any books to be banned, and neither are they. That's a lie, and I'm sick of hearing it. Statement number five. All people, regardless of origin, age, background, or views, possess a right to privacy and confidentiality in their library use. So in other words, kids have a right to privacy and confidentiality in the library. And I'm about to run out of time, so I'm just going to say it in my own words. How can you say that parents are the ones that have to do all the responsibility? Mom with three kids and a baby on her hip? I've been chased out of the youth section and told I can't go back there. So, how, because, oh, they got to read by themselves. So, how can you supervise, when you're a mom, or dad, or grandma, or grandpa, when you're running out of your kids' library? Out of the kids' section? And that's all I got to say on that. We need to get out of the ALA.
David Rice. Next speaker after that is Abigail Hope.
Hi, my name is David Rice. This is my 12th month attending the Library Board meetings. I'm not going to actually speak. I'm going to read. Isaiah 26, a song of praise to the Lord. In that day, everyone in the land of Judah will sing this song. "Our city is strong. We are surrounded by the walls of God's salvation. Open the gates to all who are righteous. Allow the faithful to enter. You will keep in perfect peace all who trust in you, all whose thoughts are fixed on you. Trust in the Lord always, for the Lord God is eternal rock. He humbles the proud and brings down the arrogant city. He brings it down to the dust. The poor and oppressed trample it underfoot, and the needy walk all over it. But for those who are righteous, the way is not steep and rough. You are a God who does what is right, and you smooth out the path ahead of them. Lord, we show our trust in you by obeying your laws. Our heart's desire is to glorify your name. In the night, I search for you. In the morning, I earnestly seek you. For only when you come to judge the earth will people learn what is right. Your kindness to the wicked does not make them do good. Although others do right, the wicked keep doing wrong and take no notice of the Lord's majesty. Oh, Lord, they pay no attention to your upright fist. Show them your eagerness to defend your people, then they will be ashamed. Let your fire consume your enemies. Lord, you will grant us peace. All we have accomplished is really from you. Oh, Lord, our God, others have ruled us, but you alone are the one we worship. Those we served before are dead and gone. Their departed spirits will never return. You attacked them and destroyed them, and they are long forgotten. Oh, Lord, you have made our nation great. Yes, you have made us great. You have extended our borders, and we give you the glory. Lord, in distress, we search for you. We pray beneath the burden of your discipline. Just as a pregnant woman cries and cries out in pain as she gives birth, so were we in your presence, Lord. We too writhe in agony, but nothing comes of our suffering. We have not given salvation to the earth nor brought life into the world. But those who die in the Lord will live. Their bodies will rise again. Those who sleep in the earth will rise up and sing for joy. For your life-giving light will fall like dew on your people in the place of the dead. Go home, my people, and lock your doors. Hide yourselves for a little while until the Lord's anger has passed. Look, the Lord is coming from heaven to punish the people of the earth for their sins. The earth will no longer hide those who have been killed. They will be brought up for all to see."
Next speaker is Abigail Hope. After that, Jeannie Lovewell. Abigail, you had my handout, right?
Yes. My name is Abby, and I'm one of the kids who grew up here using the library system here in Christian County. God restored me from what I'm about to talk about. This is what it looks like to have gay books and pornographic books that are in the library system right now to those in the community. The suicide rate for LGBTQ identity is at a rise. 19% of the gay community have attempted to do suicide, while 47% or 1.8 million people have seriously considered suicide within the last year. That is four times higher than a stress-on teenager. The Chatterford Project estimates that there is one suicide death in an LGBT community every 46 seconds. By the time this meeting is over, approximately 156 members of the LGBT community have committed suicide within the last two hours. In 2023, 7.2 Americans define themselves as lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. 72% of the LGBT community have anxiety or depression. 57% of the LGBT members are 13 to 17 years of age, while 43% are aged 18 to 24. I don't know if you don't know this about you, but these kids should not have this anxiety or depression at such a young age. On top of that, these kids and adults have to worry about their sexuality and turn to these pornographic materials to make them feel worse about their sexuality or body and as if that is the only thing that matters. When in fact, that is not true. God has a plan for every one of us, and He took me out of this lifestyle. He can certainly change the life of a hopeless person like I was. The Vatican 2013 says, "If a man lies with a male as with a woman, both of them have committed a domination. They shall surely be put to death. Their blood is upon it." God can take a very bad spot, like I am, to a good thing, like what I'm doing right now to share my story. No one is perfect, but we can strive to be Christ-like. God has given us a spirit of faith and of love. As Christians, we should correct each other, stand beside one another, and help each other grow, et cetera. As a Christian and somebody who is in the LGBT community, this is wrong, and this should not be up for discussion anymore. To make your point, this is one nation under God. And look at the dollar bill or the pledge of allegiance if you need proof. I am asking, why can't these books be in a separate area so kids cannot grab them? If these stats in my stories are not enough to change your mind, what will? These stats can and will get worse if these horrible books are not in a separate area. I'm not most taken away from the library system, but not banned.
Next speaker, Jeannie Lovewell. After that, Mary. After Jeannie.
Thank you for having allowed me to speak. All that is essential for able to triumph is that good men do nothing. And so, I am here today because of the children's books that are very inappropriate for children. Our forefathers came over from England to our country. And they formed a constitution by biblical principles so that we would not have tyranny. In Jeremiah 33:3, it says, "Call on me, and I will answer thee and show thee great and mighty things, which thou knowest not." Well, the last three and a half years, I learned a lot. And I did not know the depth of evil that was in our government. I didn't know it. But I learned it. Because, this is what I did. I said, "Lord, I do not want to be deceived, and I want truth." And God gave me truth. He said, "Call on me. I will answer thee and show thee great and mighty things, which thou knowest not." And I had not a clue. I was very naive. In Isaiah 5:20 and 21, woe unto them that call evil good and good evil; that put darkness for light and light for darkness. When people do not carefully observe the distinction between good and evil, distraction soon follows. But when we make excuses for our actions, we break down the distinction between right and wrong. If we do not take God's Word, the Bible, as our standard, we soon end up in moral decay. And that's where we're at right now. And lawlessness. The evil can keep going, and they get by with it. But the good people, they go to prison. Just like in January the 6th. Many people are in prison right now for something they did not do. I do not take God's Word, the Bible, for granted. And I stand upon the Word of God.
Mary is up next, and Jennifer Rosenbach after that. Mary, I apologize, I couldn't read.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay, I don't know what to say. They said it all. So, I just, first of all, want to thank all of you guys for everything you do. I've never learned so much about the library since coming to these meetings and listening to all your minutes there. And so, I do appreciate everything you guys do. And I'm kind of new to this. I've been coming about four or five times. And I'm just kind of baffled because I know that we agree more than we disagree in here. Everybody here agrees that we want to protect children. I know that. I don't think that I could look at any of you and you would say, "Yeah, I think little kids should be reading pornographic stuff." There's no way. I don't believe that. And I don't see, everything that I've seen since I've been coming, I haven't heard one person say they want to ban a book. I have not heard that. All I've heard is sexually explicit pornographic books and violence, too, you know, and talk about that, too. But it's harmful to children, their brains. It affects, it's much worse than I think people realize. And you can study about that, about what it does. It's just, it's not right. So, all I've heard and all I understand is we're asking that those books be placed out of their reach and then labeled. And then let the adults do whatever the adults want to do. I think we can all agree, like, we love you guys. We love each other. I don't go around, you know, parading my heterosexual relationship with my husband and shoving books in little children's faces about my heterosexual relationship. That's none of anybody's business. I don't care. We are adults. So, the main thing, it's not about anything except protecting our children. We all want that. I know we do. Protect the children from violent stuff. You know, our kids are so bombarded by all the technology stuff. I mean, there's so much stuff. There's predators. We all know that. And we need to protect them with that. But let's be able to go to the library and just chill and not even have to be concerned that my little three-year-old is going to see the cover of a book, or even a 14-year-old is going to come home with a book that has all this stuff, stuff that, you know, David read not too long ago. And it was disturbing. I don't want to hear that. I can't even imagine. You know, a teenager. They say their brain is not even developed. What, what is it, 20s or something? So that kind of stuff, they don't, you know. I mean, they're going to find it if they want to find it. But at least, let us go to the library and just check out books that we want to have. And if you're an adult, go to Barnes &amp; Noble. You can get any book you want about anything, right? So we're not missing out.
Jennifer, excuse me. Sorry. And you can sit down. I just, again, just in researching, you heard earlier the reference to a meeting we had with the lawyer, which John has offered, has moved for that information to be public because we did quote part of it on one of the sheets today. And one of the things that came up as we were looking pro and con for different options and ideas was a lawsuit with a Missouri library in Cape Girardeau. A quote from the legal proceedings was, "The library is prohibited from legal precedent, by legal precedent, from relocating books which have been determined to be written for children or teens to other sections of the library, such as to the adult collection or a secured location." In the year 2000, U.S. District Court, Northern District of Texas, issued a ruling in Sun versus City of Wichita Falls that founded that moving library materials on the basis of disapproval of content is unconstitutional under the First and Fourteenth Amendments of the Constitution. That is something that we discussed in this meeting. That's a lot of precedent for why, for better or worse, for better or worse, we were trying to go with a labeling option to not bring down lawsuits on the community or on the library. We were more concerned, actually, for the community because there are so many lawsuits. So, we have been trying quite desperately to find legally acceptable answers that are trying to meet the needs and requests of the people coming, but that are following legal precedent.
Final speaker, Jennifer Rosenruck.
Good evening. Learning that the comic book Fun Home was not only readily accessible but on display in our local library recently was disheartening and frankly, a little infuriating, despite all the controversy about these books that have been raised over the past, what, 22 months, I guess it's been? It feels as if there were some shoulder shrugged and said, "Yeah, we're going to do it anyway." So, anyway, this is one book that concerned parents of the Ozarks fought to keep out of the hands of kids. It has graphic sexual depictions that are blatantly obscene. They stand in defiance of community standards, and quite honestly, I don't understand how one can justify spending our tax dollars to buy it with the intention of furnishing it to kids. We are in a strange place with freedom of speech. Sexual exploits in literature directed at kids are argued to be a constitutional right, but criticism of vaccines or elections is worthy of censorship. When I looked up Fun Home in the online catalog, Cool Cat was quick to recommend similar readings. Among the first of them was Blankets and Gender Queer. Blankets was one of the handful of books removed from the Nixa High School because its obscene sexual illustrations violated pornography laws. And Gender Queer has been one of the most contested books nationwide with equally vulgar depictions. Yet, there they are, ready to be requested with the click of a mouse through Christian County Library. I work to protect my kids from seeing elements of the world before they're ready. It would be nice to bring them to the library more often, but the obvious agenda on display doesn't feel welcoming or inclusive to my family and our values. There used to be certain companies and institutions that I thought were trustworthy, having, at a minimum, a common interest in protecting kids. The past few years have proven that my trust was severely displaced. Schools and public libraries or institutions of American life simply cannot be trusted anymore. I hope that you will work as a board to earn it back. I will continue to stand up with my fellow community members to protect children because as Christians, that is what we are compelled to do. Some will say, "It's only some dirty pictures in books, what's the big deal?" But I see a world where some people are trying to replace God's values with their own. I'm not one to publicly jump into the spiritual fray because I just generally don't feel worthy and knowledgeable enough, but I see a battle for the hearts and minds of our kids. And if not, why is the opposition so invested? So, Mr. Garrity, I am thankful you have been appointed to the board, and I know you see the bigger task at hand that starts with one little county library. God bless you all.